At the current time.
Okay, and did you contact Brake Brothers to find out if they had winter hours?
Yes, we did, and we were, we were, quite frankly, we were a little surprised at the answer. The answer was, yes, I suppose we could operate winter hours, but the understanding was that they would operate them at an additional cost.
So that was your-
That was my impression.
Committee's understanding, committee's impression?
Right, and I guess you could fault both of us for not either asking for a follow-up in writing, they didn't provide one in, a follow-up in writing, so.
Okay, did you take into account the cost of compost and loading charges? I noticed that Brake Brothers excluded lower amounts on that. Do you feel like that is just kind of an incidental service and not as, as important to the overall contract?
Yes.
Okay, and then last question, as the point's been made, the all-seasons first-year cost is two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, and Brake Brothers was a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, that's about forty-one thousand dollars difference. For the five years, it's two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, or maybe it's forty-three thousand difference, that's about seventeen-point-two percent. Granted, if you take the winter hours out of that, that's, that would offset that difference quite a bit, but given the fact that you, that Brake Brothers has corrected that, do you feel like that, that the people of Jefferson City are getting their money's worth to pay seventeen-point-two percent more for that?
Well, I guess if I, if I had been more certain that they did intend to operate winter hours, my, I might have scored it differently, but I was not, after hearing the response, I wasn't certain that they, that they didn't deliberately exclude winter hours.
Okay, well, thank you for your answers, I know that it's a little uncomfortable to be grilled, but I appreciate your answers, thank you.
Drew?
Thank you if you indulge me just a second, I'd kinda like to answer a couple of those too, 'cause I was on that committee.
Sure.
And first, I'd say it was, it was very close, I mean, the total scores, two of us, two folks ended up voting Brake Brothers, two folks ended up, or three folks ended up voting all-seasons, so it was very close, and on my scorecard, it was a difference of one-point-two, I had ninety-one for Brake Brothers, ninety-two-point-two for all-seasons. But on the cost, the cost was set at forty percent, forty percent essentially, and so that was determined by calculation, so if, if our criteria are correct, then I think the stat, the five people that picked, selection committee, did think that the value was there only because that was the assigned percentage of votes, council's free to disagree if they like. I'll tell you where I came in at, I voted location of site better for Brake Brothers, ten to nine, I have no problem with all-seasons, but I really liked the option B location. I wrote, I voted in the same, and city's role of operations, neither ask a lot of us to be a part of it every day, and that's, you know, one of the things, I think we were, we were looking at is how much staff time is put into it, the more staff time is put into it, the less expensive it should be for the citizens. Where I started to differ there is the proposed method of performance, and I gave twenty-five for Brake Brothers and thirty for all-seasons. Winter hours were a concern, and I certainly came out of that phone call as well believing that the, that certainly wasn't included in the price, maybe that was wrong, maybe it wasn't, but I don't think it would've been appropriate for us to follow up anymore, frankly, 'cause if we would've asked how much it was gonna cost for winter hours, then we've now changed the bid. Should we then go back to all-seasons and say, well, they bid twenty thousand dollars less, you wanna match that, you know, who knows what they would've said? A couple of things that, that, again, very close, I'm not trying to discredit the Brake Brothers bids, 'cause it was very close, but just the, it comes down to little stuff, and that's what I knocked them down on. Zoning, having to rezone those spots, not owning the site was less favorable. I'll tell you, I drove by the, the property on I-70 that the Brake Brothers had several times, one time I thought it, it did not look very good, one time I thought that they cleaned it up, which, just for background, they have a site on I-70, maybe two, I'm not really sure, but one of the things they indicated is if the site got too filled up, they could move it to the site on I-70. So maybe that's not such a concern, but I wouldn't necessarily, again, we're down to small criteria, and I didn't think it looked particularly good from my point of view. Let's see, we did call Mobley, and I think that was the point Mr. Councilman Scrivener kind of indicated. I think there is a distinction in experience in that, I wrote down Mobley, but it was Mexico. Mexico is their only full-time landfill site, so they have not done a site the size of Jefferson City. Does that mean they couldn't? Well, I'm sure they could, but if, again, we're down to degrees and criteria, two close bids, so I scored them down a bit for that, because I don't, they just didn't see the experience that, that all-seasons had. And, you know, under the, I might define proposed method of service a little bit more, I think the question is, how do they intend to run the site, and do we, the selection committee, and ultimately the city council, think that is the best proposal for the, for the citizens of Jefferson? Certainly, then last point is on those home occupation companies. That was such a big deal in the bidding several years ago, that I do think the staff felt like it was important to include those home occupations with a business license in the bid, now if the council wants to drop it out, it definitely drops the cost, but it had been such a contentious issue and so widely debated, it was kind of a compromise it came to three years ago. Again, what we did three years ago doesn't dictate what you all have to do today, but I think from staff, we had a perspective that that was something that was important several years ago. So I just wanted to take the chance to not make Janice take all the heat, and I'm gonna throw Matt under the bus, Matt was in there too, but the three of us were the ones that ended up voting for all-seasons.
So it's you three.
That's right. Again, though, all close. All close, and Terry Stevenson, the purchasing director, and Dave Gröner, who's, I'm not sure what his title is now, but he deals, he directly deals with the landfill, they voted for Brake Brothers, and, you know, for all-seasons, we've had a good, good relationship, I think, think they've done pretty well, they have had complaints, but they've addressed them, and that's kind of what we're looking for, so I just wanted to toss that out, so that council understood at least where my perspective was on it.
Thank you Drew, and thank you Janice.
To reply to, to what you said, one thing you both have mentioned, and, and I, I appreciate the, the idea of experience, but I think we should not overlook the fact that, that Chris, or all-seasons had no experience when they, when they bid the initial contract, and so from an experience level, even the minimal experience that you've assigned to Brake Brothers, that's probably more than all-seasons had the first, first year of their contract, and I think they've done a great job. I have no complaints, although I did, didn't receive one question about older in the location, so.
And I would disagree with that at all, of course, again, as I was saying, just kind of a matter of real small degrees on that.
I understand, it's very, very incremental, thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Henry?
And this question is either for Janice or Drew, considering what we heard earlier, a little earlier, is there any way to go back and review this again, or has, is this already set, these votes already set, or?
On a procedure point, what is it, Mr. Counselor?
Well, I suppose I would, I think you've heard what we've heard, if you want the committee to go back and review it again, we could, it's probably in the purview of the council at this point to make that call. You know, I guess if Terry were here, she'd probably say, you'll have, you ought to give then all-seasons a chance to clarify any questions they might've had, in fairness. I would, you know, I, because I didn't, once I heard winter hours were what they, well, I didn't hear that, but hearing it tonight, winter hours are the same, they would, they, that might change a point, but for me, that's still a half a point difference, so I don't know about the rest of them. But, so the answer is, let me stop being fickle, if you want to send us back to it, we could, I think it's the purview of the council now to make a call.
Carrie?
I guess one thing that I'm struggling with is the, the price difference, because at the time, I mean, that's something we really haven't talked about yet, but all the details that lead up to this, at the time, winter hours were not included, so that made it more, when you look at the per hour, you look at the total cost and, and the value of those hours, I mean, there's kind of a, a calculation where you can kind of figure out what it would cost to operate sort of per hour, let's say, so without winter hours, or not knowing what the hours are, it's easier for one to be more favorable, but when you all were scoring them, I mean, it's a significant difference, so I'm not sure, there's a lot that goes into price, more than just the hours, but the quality and the location and convenience and experience, everything you've touched on, but how do we as a council feel comfortable making a decision when it is fairly substantial, or is it substantial? I mean, I think it is, and I think we, we'll have a hard time explaining to the public and the taxpayers why we've, why we would choose one, I feel like we just need to say, if we are gonna go with the committee's recommendation, which was pretty split, but if we are to take the committee's recommendation, which I value and appreciate, all the points that came up, so if we're going to do that, how do we explain to ourselves and to the taxpayers that, yes, it's worth it, now knowing the change in winter hours, it's still worth it because, I mean, I'm just not sure the, the value of those hours and that total to just, I'm trying to justify, it was easy coming in here tonight to justify it, but knowing the hours, now I'm, I just wanna make sure, see who can explain that, thanks.
If I understand, it may just be philosophical debate, if you're looking for something of an answer, I guess from the selection committee's point of view, the, the Brake Brothers won the cost, and so once they won the cost, there was a mathematical formula, frankly, I don't, I mean, Terry could tell you, but I don't know how it works, but they won the mathematical formula for cost, so that didn't, the winter hours at the same price didn't change the cost any, it would potentially change method of performance, maybe for Janice, maybe for me, maybe for me, I don't know, so it would be close. I think the council has to decide if the additional cost is worth the, you know, the other services that you receive, and that's a difficult case to make, you know, the, the committee, we've given you our, our best judgment, but certainly council may see some things we don't see, or what have you, so you have to be, you have to be satisfied that the proposed method of performance, location of the site, city's role in operation, experience and reliability overcome that cost.
Mr. Bray?
Janice, I have a couple of questions. In the, in committee, these are two factors that I weighed heavily, and I want to know if I'm considering these appropriately, these two items. One, and I'll stick with the hours since we've talked about, the winter hours, when I read through the bid package, I, I too did not find that winter hours were provided, and, and the bids are already submitted, and I think it's highly irregular to go back and start reworking and redoing the bids after they're submitted, and I, I would, I don't think that would be appropriate. So the fact is, in my mind, they don't have winter hours. And then the other thing that I weighed, that weighed heavily, was the, that the proposal being discussed required, it identified land locations, but they both required zoning changes, so in my mind, they don't have any land to offer for this project. You know, how do I, I don't know that zoning changes are gonna be made, I don't know if it's appropriate for the land, I don't know if it's gonna ta, if, if it is gonna get zoning changes made, I don't know if it's gonna take a month, or six months, or a year. So in my mind, they don't have land to offer for this project, so between not having winter hours, and I don't think it's appropriate to go back and start changing contracts, or start checking, changing proposals, and, and I can't assume, I don't think I can assume that the zoning changes are, you know, certain. In fact, I kinda have to assume that they're, that that might not happen, and then where are we? Where is the, am I being too, too restrictive in my thought process on the winter hours or the zoning issues?
Well, on, on the winter hours, that, that was one of my concerns as well, and it's why I gave, gave that proposal fewer points than, than the current contractor, and I think you're also correct on the zoning, I mean, it to, you have to make assumptions that, that the zoning would be approved, while we would certainly expedite the application through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, that's really all I can do for the zoning. It's ultimately the council's decision to make, make that, make that change in the zoning.
And really, really, Janice, I mean, for serving on planning and zoning for a few years before I became mayor, and there was a lot of meetings that I walked in and thought, hands down, this is a, this is, this is a done deal, and all of a sudden, you have five, or ten, or fifteen neighbors that may not like either site either, so, not to pass judgment, but I gotta, I kinda see Ralph's point of view and the others as far as location, if you don't have it, it's truly not there until it's passed by planning and zoning in this body.
Yeah, from the outward appearances, it does appear like it would be a reasonable site, but until you go through the process, you don't really know.
Don't know till you get there.
Don't know till you get there.
Alright, any other questions or comments on 2013-36? Rick?
I'm not on the committee that, that heard this, but I, I trust that they fully vetted it as well as the committee, and to that degree, I'm unsatisfied with the proposed, proposal that's in front of us, and I agree with Councilman Bray that a bid laid is a bid played, and when it's due, it's done, and I see the only recourse is to rebid. I don't think you can relook at this, or vote it in favor of the, of the recommendation, but I just don't think that facts that come evident after the bid is closed is relevant. You gotta, you gotta make the judgment based on what's in front of you at the time of the close of the bids, otherwise it could be a, a lot of rethinking of bids, but I, I support Councilman Bray and his conclusions.
Okay, any other questions on 2013-36? Bob?
From a legal standpoint, Drew, the, the process of zoning, if, if this were to go before the planning and zoning, and they came back with a negative, they sent it to us with a no recommendation, does the council have the authority to override that?
Yes, it does, yes.
I, I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to clarify that, in case that question came up later.
As a question, Drew and Janice, in that, in case that was to happen, who would the sponsor be?
Well, by recent tradition anyway, the representative of planning and zoning has sponsored that, whether or not it has passed, but if that councilman refused to sponsor it, then staff would look to find someone else to sponsor, just to let it go onto the council agenda.
In other words, representative can't change what, can't change or stop what planning and zoning has done or tried to do.
Well, they, I suppose that they could delay it, but we think it would be more fair for that sponsor, councilman sponsor.
The whole system is, is set up to protect that, and all the interest. Okay, any other discussion, great discussion, Bob, good questions, Janice, Drew, everyone else, it's a lot of tax dollars and good questions to be asking, especially this time of year, and this, in the shape that we're in. Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2013-37.
An ordinance amending Chapter Seven Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by renaming the Mid-Missouri Property Assess Clean Energy Development Board to the Missouri Clean Energy District.
Janice?
Oh.
Sorry, habit. Drew? Nathan? Third time's the charm, thank you.
Been looking over here for an hour.
This is, this originally started many years ago, this Jefferson City was asked to be sort of the pilot program for what was then called PACE, which is essentially a way for people to use their payoff, clean energy improvements through their property taxes, and originally, it was thought that that would be, that there would be several districts created, several of these entities created around the state, Jefferson City was sort of going to pioneer the way and show them how to set one up, and, and we would be mostly focused on local projects. As it turned out, it turned out to be quite differently, one of the things is that PACE never reached out to, never reached residential because of the rules that Sally Mae and Fannie Mae laid out, that they were not able to put those on their property assessments, and so it's been primarily commercial, but surprisingly, it's been tremendously successful, and our little PACE program from Jefferson City is now essentially operating throughout the entire state, and so as part of that, they would like to change the name of it from PACE to the Missouri Clean Energy District, which they feel, the board that runs this, they feel is a better name, and unfortunately for them to change that, since it's essentially, they owe their life existence to Jefferson City, and it, they exist in our code and nowhere else, they have to get our permission to change their name, which is a long explanation to say, this really doesn't do much, except for it allows them to change their own name.
Questions? Alright, moving on to number sixteen, this is Bill's pending, we'll have third reading of Bill 2013-29.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to qualification for door-to-door sales licenses.
Mr. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the current ordinance says that if you're selling, if you're peddling prop, items door-to-door, you have to have a license, and you can't obtain that license if you, if it's been five years since you committed a crime of a felony, or an ordinance to carry out the fitness of the proposed business. Because of an issue that came, we thought may have came, come up recently, we decided an amendment would be appropriate to say that if they've served any portion of the probationary term within the five years, they would be prohibited from obtaining the license. So in the most extreme circumstance, you might have someone who committed a felony, served five years, after he committed the crime, was convicted, and then stepped out, came here to get a business license to go door-to-door, felt that would be inappropriate. A high degree, we believe we owe the public a high degree of protection, given that we're licensing someone to go door-to-door.
Any questions to staff on 2013-29? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we'll have third reading of 2013-30.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri adopting revised rules and regulations for the Police Personnel Board.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are two substantive changes to the rules and regulations of the Police Personnel Board, both of those are contained within Rule 18. The first basically abbreviates the subsection A and refers to the city code, the wording is the same, rather than to set it out in Rule 18, we simply refer to the city code. The second revision, of course, establishes a closed hearing, but allows for an open hearing if the concerned employee chooses to have that, that open hearing, and that's the extent of the revisions, this was discussed by the Police Personnel Board, and they support these revisions, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Chief? Debate by council, roll call please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we'll have third reading of 2013-32.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with JC Industries Incorporated for the Missouri Boulevard Sidewalk Project.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you, as clerk indicated, this is a construction contract with JCI, Jeff City Industries, for the Missouri Boulevard Sidewalk Project, it runs sidewalk from Heisinger Road over to the Coles Development, also have a couple connections to the Greenway Trail. Project's duration's a hundred-and-thirty calendar days, we picked that 'cause we wanted this to definitely wrap up before the shopping season gets started in earnest in December. The cost of the contract's four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars, just, just over that, and it's an eighty-twenty grant project with, through MoDOT, and the city's actual cost share is just over ninety-one thousand dollars. Happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for staff on 2013-32? Carlos?
Matt, you didn't say, but was JCI the lowest bid?
It was the lowest bid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Council debate, roll call please.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we'll have a third reading of 2013-33, will that be as substituted, counselor?
Uh, well, we haven't substituted it yet.
Okay, so 2013-33-1.0.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the maintenance of sidewalks on Missouri Boulevard constructed, constructed by project numbers STP 3105-20 and STP 3101-504.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the original agreement, that is before you currently, or that's on the table currently, basically says that on the, some of these sidewalk programs that Mr. Marash talked about, MoDOT is willing to give us the right-of-way, but asking that we maintain them. The, when, in reviewing those contracts, we noted that the, as you heard Ms. Powell indicate, there's two different projects, the STP 3100 and 3105, or close to there to, 3100 is already done, or 3105, one of the, one of the two is already done completely, and so we felt like that shouldn't be included in the, in this agreement. MoDOT Friday sent me a copy of a revised agreement that is just for the current project, and so I guess I'd ask, and Phyllis should've uploaded that to your iPads early this afternoon, so if you would be so kind as to move to substitute the revised contract, and I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we offer the substitute maintenance agreement as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, it's been first, and it's been, there's been a motion and a second to accept, to accept the substitute, first we'll talk about discussion on the substitute. Seeing none, debate? Seeing none, roll call please. On this, as substituted.
Oh, you have to, you have to do a voice vote on the substitute first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna do a roll call on it, but we can do, we can do, if we can do voice, we can.
On the motion, correct.
All of those in favor of substituting, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign, motion passes, now we'll be looking at 2013-33 as substituted. Additional comments, Drew?
Nope.
Bob? Other debate? Roll call please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes, next we'll move into resolutions, Resolution 2013-18.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of HUD Community Development Block Grant Award for Program Year 2013 and Amendment of Action Plan.
At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion by staff? Janice?
Thank you, Mayor, this would authorize acceptance of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Funds for Program Year 2013, which has already started, obviously, since it's July, but the amount that we're receiving is, is a little bit greater than what we had anticipated, about fifty-eight-hundred dollars more. We're also proposing to revise our action plan budget for 2013, and that's also included in your packet, and it shows how the funds would be distributed between owner-occupied housing support, neighborhood improvements, public improvements, homeless objectives, and administration. Total amount that we're receiving this year is two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars.
Any questions of staff? Debate on 2013-33? Roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Resolution 2013-18, roll call please.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes, next Resolution 2013-19.
A continuing resolution of the City of Jefferson authorizing the filing of applications with the Federal Transit Administration and operating administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by forty-nine USC Chapter 53 and any other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Matt?
Just a quick update, this is an update to our Jeff Tran paperwork, and the two-year transportation, federal transportation bill passed recently, so in, in that legislation, the- So, uh, in, in that legislation, the city became a direct recipient, where in the past it was a designated recipient. And, uh, this allows our staff to, to apply electronically to receive the operating and capital funds if they're available, uh, from the federal government. And our allocation is $726,000 for our operating funds.
Okay.
From grant.
Any other questions of Matt on, uh, 2013-19? Seeing none, council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Any comments under 20? Without having any thing under 19? Under new business, anyone to speak tonight under new business? Yes, sir, Ralph.
Under new business, I'd like to take this time, actually, Councilman Henry and I are putting together a Ward Five meeting. And it is scheduled for July the 20th, Saturday morning, July 20th. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Fifth Ward residents to save the date for July the 20th. And there'll be more information coming for our ward meeting. And it'll be out at McClung Park in the morning. And on that, at that time, we will discuss, uh, projects and issues of interest to the Fifth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. I miss Mr. Steinman. Did you sign up, Mr. Steinman?
I tried to.
Okay. Uh, while you're here, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Leonard Steinman, 110 North Lincoln. It has to do with the poles and that the utility lines are on. By federal standards, since you're taking federal money, you're supposed to keep your trees and your, your lines at 13/6. I've been a truck driver for years and years and owned a trucking company. I know what the standards are. When I was gone, Ammer and UE knocked down my trees. And when they did, they knocked down my MediaCom line down to 12 foot four. I called everybody I could call except the city council. I should have called Nathan, but I didn't. But the line went across Lincoln, Lincoln Street, which is a pretty major street. About 3,000 cars go through there a day. And, uh, last Friday morning, Ammer and UE's truck, bucket truck, hit the line and broke it. We called MediaCom. MediaCom says, oh, well, we will be right out. We'll be right out. We called the police department. We have a police, police report. The line still had impedance of four amps still going through it. I have a Baptist church right across the street where the line was going to, with children playing all the time. Four, four amps don't sound like a lot, but you know, if you've got wet grass, dew on the grass, and a child grabs a hold of it, he's going to get a good shock. So at 3:00 in the afternoon Friday, after being told they were sent a service truck out there, and there was no wind damage in the area as far as I know, where they couldn't do it. MediaCom is basically a local output. They told me that my line would be taken care of by the third or fourth of this July. Now they're wanting to send me a bill for July because they said it takes seven days to cancel the contract. The other factor is, we need to go around and see all these lines that are wrapped around the poles that are from Ammer, I mean, from, uh, MediaCom, that are wrapped around the pole, 12, 14, 20 feet of it. There are people in scrap business. They've been cutting them, and they've been getting shocked. They're still alive. They, when they get taken down the line, they just, they just wrap it around a pole and they don't ever turn it off. And, uh, we need to do something about that because somebody's going to end up getting, getting hurt off of it. Because four amps don't sound like much, but four amps on dew, dew area, when you cut into it, and I'm not the one that did it, but when you cut into it, you get a shock. And, uh, we, we, we need to straighten MediaCom out. My wife did call Nathan Nicholas Friday afternoon. And he says, well, there's, there's a standard that the state of Missouri did, turn around and said, uh, it's, it's on a line pole. Well, if it's on a line pole and it's in the city of Jefferson, the city of Jefferson should turn around and say, hey, look, you maintain it properly, then thank you. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, coming up. Yes, sir.
I'm not speaking for JeffTran.
Okay. First of all, you have to sign up before the meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. And second of all, I let, um, Mr. Steinman as a professional courtesy, so I'll also let you. You have three minutes.
Thanks a lot. This is addressing, if you look back on where Mrs. McMillan on...
I'm sorry, sir. For the record, could you state your name and address?
Paul Van Horn, 808 Strasburg Court, uh, which is Councilman Carroll's area and Mr. Graham's, uh, Fourth Ward. Question, what I'm bringing to you is just a question of clarity under, uh, 2013 and 2000, or, and dash 35. And that, that issue was, I know Mr. Scrivner brought up the, the concept, the question about Missouri Boulevard and, you know, entrance into that, and brought the question, is there going to be any traffic problems? How many of you have driven up and down Missouri Boulevard when they've loaded and unloaded, uh, the cars? Any of you? Well, I drive that pretty, pretty steadily. And that does create kind of a problems there. I don't know how that's been approached. Second of all, as far as the drainage, uh, Councilman Car, uh, Carroll, remember about quite a few years ago, probably your first session, when we were putting Wildwood Crossing in and also Coles down in West Point Estates? Remember that? When we got out there and walked in the coal? Is, is the retention basin that is being there, which is under government regulations with, uh, with the cattails and everything else, is that enough to accommodate the water flow coming in from Wildwood Crossing? That's just a point of question, of clarity, and probably your staff, Mrs. McMillan can answer that.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate the time. Uh, okay, moving on. Anything else under new business? Anything under number 22? Carrie.
I do have a comment, and it's, I'm not sure where it falls, pertaining to the landscaping at the very end. I kind of put my hand up at the end of comments. And...
Landscaping of...
Landscaping, oh, uh, I'm sorry, compost site.
Uh, actually, I tell you what, you can do, we'll go back to number 20, you can do it there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we're back on 20.
Okay, thank you. Uh, something I'd started to say, and then we went on to the next topic, and I thought, now at the end, I am thinking about it again. I know the comment came up about the zoning in the area, and that, that makes sense. You know, we'd have to change the zoning. That's not guaranteed. And the reason I, I just was bringing it up again, and I kind of wanted to mention to Drew something to think about because if we bid it out that it has to be within city limits, my concern is for us to say at the council level, well, we don't know what the outcome could be of zoning if it needs to be rezoned. Now, did they know at the time they placed their bid? And, and truly, I guess that's up to the council to decide, do we want to move forward with a site that doesn't currently have the appropriate zoning but could be changed? And I, I guess the reason I say that is I know last time with the current provider, there was a zoning change. It was in a neighborhood with one exit. There were issues there. But the other person that was bidding against it had a busy street in front of them. So we had, we had hard issues with both sites. But the current site, from what I recall, was, I thought it was rezoned. And I do remember some neighbor issues. So my concern is to say they don't have a site because it's not zoned that way, which is true, and that's valid. Yet, we don't want to, I mean, that, I guess it just maybe scores higher for the one that does have a zoned correctly site. I don't want it to come out as if, well, the council, uh, talked very unfavorably, let's say, because they don't have that, and then that looks unfair to them when our bid says it has to be, let's say, within city limits. So I, I guess that's a Drew question. Thanks.
Could I answer?
You can answer it now, or if you, if you need more time, by all means, take time.
No, I defer to Janice if they, if, did they have to rezone or not, but then I want to finish answering the question.
Um, I believe that the site on Veterans Lane would require special use permits.
No, the last time, I think, was the question. The previous, but the last time this came up, it was Brake Brothers and All Seasons also. Did both of them require rezoning back then? Or did All Seasons already have it?
Um...
I believe that was the question.
All Seasons, I, you know, I don't recall what the Brake Brothers site, what site they proposed.
They were north of the river. Oh, that's right.
Oh, on city property.
And I'd like to point out...
It was north of town.
That's like apples and oranges, really, but...
Just to finish, uh, kind of your, your question, I'm really talking to the media here. I hope they understand that you all are just asking questions of the staff as to why we made a decision. Whether or not you agree with what we said, zoning or not, you'll decide next time, and that's okay. But, but this council has not talked negatively at all about the Brake Brothers, uh, nor, nor All Seasons. You just heard what the staff recommendation was. And sometimes, you know, again, as I said, we're talking minor degrees. So just because we think one is better doesn't mean we don't think the other bid is fine. So I just want, I don't want the, the council to take any, any criticism at all for the recommendation of the staff. You're still in the process of hearing us out.
And that's why this, that's why this takes two meetings and two readings and all the above to be flushed out. All right. Thank you, Carrie, for that. Okay. Bob?
My recollection is that that site, that current site was not rezoned because it, it had a propane gas business in there before. And I think it had whatever the highest commercial...
Industrial, heavy industrial.
I think it was heavy industrial or something.
Outdoor use, outdoor operations, outdoor, everything.
Yeah. I, I don't think it had to be rezoned.
No.
Okay. Anything else under number 20? Any other new business? Anything under 21? 22? Okay. At this point in time, we may go into closed session to talk about real estate under Missouri State Statute 610 dot 021 subsection 2. Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second? Discussion about going into closed session to talk about real estate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.